All right. Welcome to the June 11th Newport Beach City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right. So we have some fun presentations to start this off. So we're going to start this off with a proclamation for Jim Poorman Trenton. Poorman, come on up. So first off, amazing outfit. Thank you for dressing up, Poorman. It's a pleasure to be here. So we, real quick, since some of you, raise your hand if you've never been to a city council meeting before. All right. Phenomenal. Well, welcome. So this year, a lot of you know this, but this year, one of the things that we're doing is honoring people who are helpers out in the community. People who have really gone out of their way to make sure that people are more connected and have really gone above and beyond in charitable activities. And so I've asked my fellow council members to make recommendations on people in groups that are doing some amazing things out in the community. And my fellow council member, Robin Grant, recommended that we bring in Poorman. And so I'm going to read a proclamation. Is this your first proclamation you've ever received, Poorman?
That's respectable. Yes.
Fair enough. So we'll go ahead and start. James "Jim" Trenton has been a longstanding radio broadcaster, has used the nickname "The Poor Man" for around four decades. And whereas Trenton started working on Los Angeles-based K-Rock in May 1981, where he would go on to have significant success. And whereas Trenton went on to work on a number of Southern California radio stations, landing close to home when he started working at our local radio station, KOCI FM 101.5, which he affectionately references as the low-power-
The low-power blowtorch.
And whereas Trenton's morning drive time radio program, Poor Man's Morning Rush, has endeared itself to the local community, thanks in part to Trenton's continuous and significant heart for bringing people together toward positive and meaningful connections. And whereas Trenton has hosted an annual event where he broadcasts for 28 straight hours over New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, which acts as a fundraiser for local organizations. Now therefore I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Jim Poorman Trenton for his dedicated local work as a helper in the Newport Beach community. Congratulations. So before you go, I get to say a couple of things and then Robin and anyone else would like, who would like to as well. But this is really special because the last time I was mayor during 2020 was the first time I met Poorman. And one of the reasons I met him was because he had called up with actually one of our other helpers in the community, Mario Morovic, to ask questions about what was going on in the world and asked me to come on to the radio station and onto his show to try to explain to him, excuse me, explain to the audience what was going on and how it would affect their lives. And then he called the next day and said, hey, I have people asking more questions. Would you mind coming on? And ever since then, I've gotten to come on and talk about things going on in the state and the county and the community, et cetera. But more than anything, the reason he did that was because he wanted people to actually understand what was going on. He cared about all of his listeners and he's always cared about them. And this has been a fun four years and I really have appreciated learning more about you and really seeing the heart for community that you have. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. So first, I also want to acknowledge your outfit. I just came back from a sister city trip to Japan and I feel like you're paying a little homage to the kimono and slippers with your outfit. So thank you for dressing accordingly. I also hold you in high regard, Poorman. One of the platforms that I ran for city council on was this idea that we bring more people in to the process. And I think your radio show does something similar. It brings more people who might not necessarily be interested in city matters or, you know, matters of local concern or are interested but don't have an outlet. You provide that for them. And so I think that's really important and that's probably one of the reasons that I felt such a kinship with you when I first met you is that you really do care about our community and you're really interested in. That means a lot to me and I know a lot of people. So we're really grateful to have you. I wrote a couple of words I don't want to miss out. Your Morning Rush is the daily, Newport's daily morning show and it's so great that you air live and so we get people's true reactions and we can hear some honest opinions and that's always a great thing on KOCI 101.5 FM, if anybody hasn't listened to it. It's a nonprofit radio station, which I also highly regard. People who work for nonprofits in our community, it's always a great thing. And I know that your director, Brent Kalin, is always very interested in reaching out to the Newport community through you. So that's wonderful for us. You know, your coverage of business and events and local issues is a go-to for many in the community. Obviously, there's many of them that are here today. And anytime I go to one of your events, I am overwhelmed by the support that you get in the community because of all that you do for us. And my personal favorite is the musical theme of the day. It's usually an homage to something from the 70s or 80s, my favorite genre of music. So thank you for doing that. You know, you're instrumental in keeping us informed, our residents, our visitors, keeping people knowledgeable. It's an important thing in a city and you bring a lot of value to us. So thank you for all you do.
Awesome. Mayor Protam.
I would just start by saying how much I enjoy the Mayor O'Neill and what he's doing with the helpers and acknowledging those people that give back in the community. And I can't think of anyone more than what you do as far as getting that message out there. And nothing more stressful than when I'm on the show and you ask me what my musical theme of the day or what song I have to choose. So thank you for continuing to keep me on my toes. Congratulations. Councilmember Avery.
Well, Mayor O'Neill was not able to attend one of the shows and so he asked me to step in and that was a highlight for me, being on council, to be interviewed by Poorman and give my sort of tilt on the city and what was going on. But I was really impressed with the number of folks who were around. The folks that really enjoy you, love you and they're constant, they're there all the time. We were out on the sidewalk, of course, and between 21 Oceanfront and Blackhees, somewhere in there, all cordoned off. And it was a great experience. So thank you for that.
Amazing. Poorman, mic's yours.
Well, I'm just, first of all, overwhelmed. I want to thank you, Mayor O'Neill, for this and Robin, Councilmember Grant. I think I've interviewed everyone, but for some reason, Councilmember Kleiman, you're the only one I've never interviewed.
I've actually been on your show twice, but-
Really?
Yeah, she has.
It wasn't very memorable.
Was that before you were elected?
Or-
No?
Oh, don't worry about it. Yeah, maybe you remember me as Laura Kleiman.
Yeah, Laura has done a great job.
Or Sarah Weber, that's the other option.
Well, I apologize on that, but I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Kleiman, of former Mayor Blom, who's been on several times. And I totally remember during COVID when we did that live remote from Blackhees, former Mayor Avery, when you were on. It was great to have you on as well. And Mayor Protam Stapleton, didn't be the next mayor theoretically, right? And Robin, I mean, we've become really good friends and you've been on many times. And so has Eric, Councilmember Weigand. You've all been part of the show and I'm honestly overwhelmed. I've never gotten any kind of commendation at all. In fact, my brother is even here, which is really surprising. The poor brother is never going to the events. Where are you, Jeff?
Next to you.
Oh, there he is.
Wait, there's two of you?
Yeah. But honestly, he's way different. Like, he would probably be sitting in one of those seats. And in fact, his significant other, Randy, she was really tough on me until you guys did this commendation. Now she says, we're really proud of you. Did you know that, Jeff? So anyway, I want to say thanks to all of you. It wouldn't be possible for me to be here today. And when I started six years ago, it was really hard to get a radio job. And I was going to, you know, Racer Tate, who works at the MAC guy, says, why don't you try and do a surf report at the local station, KOCI? And I got there and the door was locked. I thought it'd maybe close down. And then I called the number and answering the phone was the owner of the station, Brent, Brent Kalin, right here. Give Brent a round of applause, folks. He's a former K-Rock jock. And we went in there to do a surf report and I came out with a morning show. Honestly, I had no idea that six years later I'd be doing this, married, having a dog and a home. Back then, I had a little hut that I rented. I'm not going to tell you about the poor hut. But it's just been a remarkable situation. We started out the show and there was really no plan in place. I didn't know how long I'd do it. I wasn't worried, but it was a lot of fun. And what it's turned into is such a community thing. Like, I've made so many friends from all of you and I've got to give it up for the Cricket Crew. I'm wearing a Cricket Crew tie. Where's the Cricket Crew, you guys, right here? Members of the Cricket Crew, a lot of people who listen to the show. Everybody give a round of applause. If you listen to Poor Man's Morning Rush, let's hear it. My wife, De'Ames, right there. And let's see, who else? Gosh.
This is not a four-hour show, Poorman.
Pardon me?
It's not a four-hour show.
Yeah, you're right, exactly. You guys actually have to do some real work, right? Anyway, to everybody who's here, Derek and Bonnie, thanks for making the trek. John Connors, appreciate that. Brian O'Rourke, chief lifeguard. Chief of Police, Scott and Kathy Dahl, right there. Do not mess with Scott. But anyway, to all of you, it wouldn't be possible for me to do what I'm doing without the listeners. It's all about the listeners, always has been. And I want to thank all of you listeners, Brent, and you in the city council for this proclamation. I will never forget this moment. I truly mean that. And Mr. Mayor, are you going to be on tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Awesome. So hang on, hang on. So we're going to take a picture over there, next to the flags.
Also Chief Jeff Boils, the fire chief, and Marie, the sales director, and everybody. Thank you, guys.
Next, we're going to move into, by the way, if you're here for Poor Man's cake, I think they may, they may have some. No? Anyway, either way. So Evan, why don't you come on up? So next up, or actually, the folks from our American Legion? Yep, come on, come on up. So our next up is going to be a proclamation to the American Legion on its 100th year in the City of Newport Beach, specifically the American Legion Newport Harbor Post 291. So this one, this one was a joint effort between Councilmember Weigand and me. We're really excited to celebrate your 100th year. So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation first and then the mic will be, will be yours. Whereas the American Legion Newport Harbor Post 291 was founded by 30 World War I veterans who met at the Balboa Chamber of Commerce, where they elected as their first commander, Raymond Hitchcock Brunswick. And whereas history shows that the Cub Scouts of America Organization was born right here at Newport Harbor Post 291. And whereas on September 2nd, 1940, the city granted to Post 291 a new lease at 15th Street, the current location, and set aside the tidlands as the home for the post. And whereas Post 291 boasts a membership of nearly 8,000 across all of its entities, which include an auxiliary and Sons of the American Legion. And whereas Post 291 focuses on helping active military personnel, veterans and their families. And whereas Post 291 will be hosting a centennial celebration on July 4th, 2024, featuring a pancake breakfast, three bands, a Fourth of July Boat Parade, a family day on July 5th, a black tie gala and awards dinner the night of July 5th, and a concluding celebration all day, July 6th. Now therefore I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the American Legion Newport Harbor Post 291 on its 100th anniversary. Sorry, just one second. Before you go, I just want to say thank you so much for coming in. And Post 291, I think everyone agrees, has always been part of the fabric of our city as long as any of us have ever been alive. And so celebrating 100 years with you and not just having you, celebrating it with you, but having you open up to the community and celebrating it as we celebrate our country's birthday is a fantastic feat. So I really appreciate that. And then Councilmember Weigand.
Yeah. The post has a special place in my heart. My grandfather used to play piano there and my grandma was, did the books for the auxiliary back in the day. So I spent a lot of childhood memories down at the Legion and I was a member of the Sons before I was on the council. But since, I guess we own the land, I'm not allowed to be on the, be a member anymore. So I have a temporary suspension until I'm done here. So, but I really appreciate all the hard work that goes on at the post for our veterans. It means a lot to them, especially today, and a lot of mental health issues come out of service. And what you guys provide helps those service members. So I appreciate every one of you and all the folks down there that work the hard work to keep everyone at a place that they can connect with their colleagues and those that they served with and with, with having the public come to the pancake breakfast, get to see what the veterans do or what they have done for our country and bring that community spirit. So thank you guys so much.
Awesome. Councilmember Grant.
I just wanted to reiterate what both the mayor and Councilmember Weigand have said, how grateful we are to have your organization. This anniversary is very meaningful for our city. It's an important milestone for our community. I don't have the length of experience as our council member Weigand does, but I certainly have had a rich experience with the Legion since I've lived here in Newport Beach and most recently since I've been on council. And it's always been a very positive and uplifting experience to come to the Legion and see all the great work that you're doing, raising money, providing care packages, fundraising drives, emergency assistance. And I was actually surprised to learn how much that is, up to $500,000 a year, at least this year and in other years. That's, that's a very significant contribution to the community and it's greatly appreciated. And I personally am very grateful that we have the opportunity as a city to have you represent us with that community, the military community, and make us a partner in those relationships. So thank you very much.
Okay. Now the mic's yours.
Well, thank you very much. I want to thank the council and the staff for giving us this recognition. I have to say that our post, we're hoping to be the patriotic center for Newport Beach. One of the pillars of the American Legion is Americanism, so we always strive for that. And the celebration, it's not only for us to celebrate our 100th anniversary, but it's also to give back to the community for all their support, the past 100 years also. And I have up here a few of the officers and I have to say, I'm the junior, even though I'm the commander, I'm the junior guy here. So let me go ahead and introduce them real quick. This is Mike Schubert. He's member-at-large. Brian Fleming, he's the first vice and the commander-elect. We have Mike Mailman, Sergeant-at-Arms, and John Reynolds, who is the junior past commander and he'll soon be member-at-large also.
Fantastic. Congratulations and just so proud to have you here. Congratulations on your 100th anniversary. So we're going to do the same thing. We'll go ahead and take a picture over there. All right. So our last proclamation is a really special one because it's not just a proclamation today. I'm also getting to present the Carnegie Medal to Faruze. Why don't you come on up here, Faruze? This is, this is a pretty amazing story and one that I look forward to telling through the proclamation. But as you come up here, I just want to point out real quickly, if you look in the back, these firefighters are here for you. Because, actually, why don't I read this so that I can explain to everyone why we're here today? Whereas flames broke out on the first floor of a two-story Newport Beach, California apartment on December 20th, 2022, where three children, ages nine, six and five, were inside a bedroom on the second floor as flames grew and spread to the second floor. And whereas Faruze Jane Schleck, who lived in a neighboring apartment, had already escaped the burning building when she learned that the three children were still inside. Faruze ran back into her own apartment, accessed the neighboring apartment, ran down a hallway filled with swirling smoke and high-pitched noise, kicked in the children's bedroom door and gathered the children. Whereas Faruze ran back down the hall, where she quite literally saved the lives of the three children. And whereas Faruze has received a bronze medal from the Carnegie Hero Fund, a prestigious honor for civilian heroism after being successfully nominated by Newport Beach Fire Department Captain Joe Harrison. Now therefore I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Faruze Jane Schleck for her bravery in receiving the Carnegie Hero Fund Medal. Let's see. Chief Boils, did you want to say a few words? And as he's walking up here, I'm going to present this to you and we'll take a picture of it. But I do want to show you, show the audience, because I've actually already shown you, this is the Carnegie Medal. It is rarely given out. It is, it is not given out to very many people each year. But they, as they call through the nominations for civilian heroism like this, they chose this story and I think you can understand why. Chief Boils.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We've had the privilege of getting to know Faruze for the, since that event took place. And as much as we love Poorman and respect the American Legion, the real reason, like you said, these folks are in the back are to support Faruze and for what she did. And I'd like to thank you for publicly recognizing her and her heroic efforts that night. She's, she's an amazing person and I think we can all agree that our communities are a lot closer, safer and resilient when people like Faruze put the needs of others in front of themselves. So with that, she, she's just incredibly deserving of this. Just want to say thank you personally again.
Although you don't have to, you have an open mic.
It's very hard for me to accept such a huge award, like the Carnegie Medal, because it's such a privilege, such a beautiful, beautiful award. But, and I know it's hard to believe. Sorry. Shoot. Sorry. Actually, that night was really beautiful. It was a beautiful night because, because it just had a beautiful, you know, ending. It was, it was a great, you know, it was a great story. And, and it had a perfect ending. And, and it kept, and the, the beauty and the love just kept going. It didn't, it didn't just end that night. That night, somebody put a really beautiful blanket over me, which is still on my bed. And, you know, I met some people that have completely affected and changed my life, like Chief Joe Harrison, all of you, which I see all of you constantly on the streets and in my neighborhood and I love you all so much. And Chief Boils, of course. And even just a few days after the fire, I was in Michigan with my family and I knew I had to go home a few days later. I had no idea when I got off the plane where the kids and I would go. Really, I was homeless. And a friend called that I really didn't know that well and she said, she texted me and she said, you know, I heard what happened. Where are you going? And I said, I don't know, I'm looking, I have no idea. I don't know where to go. And she said, yeah, you do. This is my address. You're coming to my house and putting the key in the mailbox. Show up and I'm not even going to, you know, disturb or ask you questions. And she's sitting in the back, right there. That's Carly. She's a sister to me. She, she gave me an exhale and a breath that I needed for months and it just has continued ever since. But that has been what my life has been like ever since the fire, is just all of that continued. So there's so much more I can say, but it's all like that. It's just all, all along those lines of just intense support and beauty and love like this. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and take a picture over there as well. All right. So we're going to go ahead and move into our presentation. Sorry, just one second. Let me get it back, gather it back up. Okay. We're going to take a presentation from the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control. Do we have our representatives here? Great. Great.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, and thank you, Councilmember Eric Wiegand, for being such a solid supporter of this city as a board of trustee member for mosquito and vector control. All right. So next week, we're going to not celebrate, but we're going to observe National Mosquito Awareness Week. This week always weirdly seems to coincide with the beginning of mosquito season. It may be because summer starts during that week. This year, as you know, we've had a lot of rain, so there's been a lot of rain just getting stagnant, which mosquitoes love. People say, if I have water, are the mosquitoes going to breed? And I said, would you drink that water? If you would drink that water, no. If it looks yucky, mosquitoes would love it. So I'm going to give you a real quick presentation right here. I'm very proud of our mission. It encompasses what we do, and I'm proud to be a part of it. First thing that we do is to educate and protect the people of Orange County from vectors and prevent vector-borne diseases in an environmentally responsible manner. We take every word very seriously in all of that. You'll see, the first animal there is the most deadly animal in the world. It is the mosquito. Mosquitoes have been around since the dinosaurs, and we all know what happened to the dinosaurs. And since then, the mosquito's just been getting better and better at what they do, which is to take our blood, so that they can have more babies, so that they can take our blood. Next to that, we have the red imported fire ant. And I will just say, if you see an ant mound in your yard, and the dirt looks like coffee grounds, and there's a bunch of different-sized red and black ants in there, don't put a stick in it, don't pour hot water on it. Call us, we'll come out and take care of it. Rats, we have them everywhere. If you do have rats in your home, give us a call. We won't treat for them, but we will provide advice. Ticks, fleas, and filth flies, we can also help out with. We use a technique called Integrated Vector Management. Our first step in that is to educate. Again, the reason we put such an emphasis on education is because we have about 100 technicians that cover all of Orange County. These new mosquitoes, these eighties of gipti, these ankle biters, they only need a bottle cap full of water to breed about 20 to 30 mosquitoes. So while we're out there looking everywhere we can and doing everything we can, just that much water can have these mosquitoes out there. Surveillance, we have traps set up all around the county in a grid system, and we test the animals in there for disease, and we also monitor their abundance, how many of them are out there. If there is an abundance of mosquitoes and there is the presence of disease, we will spray. But going back to that environmental piece, we will not spray unless we really have to prevent the spread of disease. We have two kinds of people that give us calls, people who want us to spray and the people who don't want us to spray. If we spray too much, the mosquitoes can build up a resistance, so we only use the spraying when we really need to. What we would rather do is use source reduction and just get rid of the problem altogether, which is to get rid of that standing water. So these are the mosquitoes. They came into the county about 10 years ago, and now they are here to stay. They're the eighties of gipti, also known as the ankle biters. They're cold-blooded, so the warmer it is, the more active they are, the quicker they reproduce. Again, why summer is a concern. They're very smart. They lay their eggs just above the water line of containers. They look like really small pieces of black rice, and they can stay relevant for up to two years, and if that water rises, we can have more mosquitoes. Last year, our supervisor said there's probably billions of mosquito eggs out there, just waiting for the rain. One of the big concerns is the diseases that they can transmit. Dingay is a very big concern for us. In any area where dingay is present, it is the number-one cause of illness in that area. Most of the dingay cases we see are travel-related cases. Somebody goes to a country that has a high rate of dingay, gets bit by a mosquito, comes back, feels sick. Healthcare agency looks at them and says, you have dingay, or you had it. Our concern is if while they're here, they get bit by another mosquito, and then that mosquito bites other people. Now we have, we have travel-related, we have local, sorry, we have local transmission of dingay, okay? Not just travel-related. We did have a local transmission in Long Beach, just a little bit north of Seal Beach, last year. We also had local transmission in Pasadena. So again, we're asking for everybody's help to just get rid of that standing water wherever we can. These are some of the popular breeding sources for eighties. It can, they can breed in that much water there than a vermilion. A lot of us have plant saucers because we don't want the water to get on our nice tables. Mosquitoes love that because we don't think to look at the water that's in there, they will breed in there. They will breed indoors, they'll breed outdoors, they'll breed everywhere. So what can we do? We can take charge. One of our favorite people to help train are the little kids, because they're out there. Once they know what to do, they're running around, or they can see the water, they can dump it. But it just, we just have to be constantly on the lookout for that standing water. We got a lot of attention last year for our drone program. It is very effective. We use it in large areas such as the wetlands, marshes. Good thing about the drones is we don't have to track through the sensitive wildlife area. We don't have to make paths and all that, and we can just directly apply the product where we need to. So this is a new thing that you might have heard about. The L.A. Times did a nice article about, I'm calling them the ankle-biter fighters. There's a lot of people that are concerned about, oh my God, there's Bill Gates mosquitoes, or whatever that is. No. We are working on a program in Mission Viejo. It is a pilot program where we're using a technique that has been used for decades here in Southern California, where, for the Mediterranean fruit fly, where we, they x-ray the males, they collect them, and they actually drop Mediterranean fruit fly sterile males all throughout Southern California, Riverside, Orange County, Los Alamos. That's helped keep the numbers down. We're trying the same thing with eighties of gipti here in Mission Viejo. They are ankle-biter fighters. And together, I hope we can fight back Orange County as one. This graphic is meant to show all of Orange County in one way or another. If you're wondering how Newport Beach is represented, it's those palm trees right there on the right, and we thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wiegand.
Yeah. So this council selected me to represent the vector control, and there are 34 cities in Orange County, plus the County of Orange, so 35 board members that we meet once a month, sometimes twice, even sometimes three times, but usually it's once a month, just to discuss everything from budget all the way to looking for a new headquarters. The operation that they're at in Garden Grove has been there since early, like, what was it, 1949, just post-World War II?
Yes, sir, 1947.
So it's a pretty bare bones operation. There are two assessments that are on your property tax, one that cannot be touched and one that could potentially be touched. But, you know, they run a pretty bare bones operation there. If you get a chance to tour there, you'll see that they use every square inch of the facility that they have for their trucks, for their equipment, for their ponds where they create mosquito-eating fish, to this sterilization program that they're working with their sciences. So it's a really intricate board. It's a lot of interesting and neat science and things that you would be impressed with. But their budget is pretty limited. But they do a great service for the county, and me in particular, I hate mosquitoes, they love me, and I do everything I can to get rid of them. But it's important to have, educate our population so that they know that that standing water that's in their backyard, or in their front yard, or wherever it may be, is an incubator for the pests. But as you saw in the beginning of the presentation, there's other things that the vector control does, not just mosquitoes, but I think the primary goal is mosquitoes. So I really appreciate you coming out today, and we'll keep at it and keep up the fight. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I just want to say, we do offer a free service to come out. You can call us on our phone, you can go to the website. Recommend you, if you do see mosquitoes, you call us early because we get really busy in summer.
Got it. Councilmember Avery, last comment before you leave, sir.
Yeah, I called Vector Control about a year ago, and they came out. But I think the important thing is talk to your neighbors and have them patrol their yards, because, you know, there's always, you can almost always find some water for them to breed in, and various vessels around the yard and places you don't think of. And also your drainage system, you know, there can be water just in there, and so, from your sprinklers, and pour a little something down there, like vodka or bleach. Either one will do it. One's cheaper than the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming, and thank you for serving, Councilmember Wiegand. All right. Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Before we go into closed session, do we have any public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? If you'd like to come on up.
Hi, Kathy Frazier, Island Avenue. I want to talk to you about the crosswalks on the Boulevard. They're dangerous and they're scary. In 2016, the City Council authorized a study of the crosswalks. There's 38 of them. For some reason, the company that you hired only studied nine of them. And of those nine, they only studied them on one Thursday in the winter and one Thursday in the summer. Since then, Marina Park is developing into a real nice attraction. We have more restaurants, we have more bars, we have more residents, we have Lido House. I think it's time to do another study, because the speeding on the Boulevard is causing residents to fear for their lives crossing the street. We would like a light at Island and Balboa. And why there? Because you've approved a new library and a new fire station. We have a lot of businesses, we have a library, we have the fire station, obviously, we have a coffee shop, we have another restaurant, we have a market, all on that corner, which draws a lot of people, and now we're going to be drawing children to the library. So it's time that we have another study. We have a study that is really a study, instead of just, I don't know what that was. Nine out of 38 crosswalks is not a study, on one day in the winter and one day in the summer. And the final recommendation on that authorized study was that we have more police presence. And that's something that the residents have been begging for. We don't want more cruisers, we don't want somebody to show up one day a week, we want a motorcycle officer there all the time. And that may not be reasonable, but that's what we want. The motorcycles draw fear in drivers. The cruisers do not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding closed session item A, which is a significant exposure to litigation regarding the potential increase in the rent for moorings, I am surprised you don't have the usual parade of mooring people here today. But I just wanted to mention, in my view, as not a mooring holder, and I don't think this probably would be a proper topic for closed session, but I think the easiest way to reduce the exposure to potential litigation would be to ask the Harbor Commission to take a step back and to give everybody the impression that they're being treated fairly and equally, which would be to reconsider all of the title and rents at once, and not a one-off approach, doing the moorings at one time and the others at a later time. And I think that would probably mitigate the problem that you're talking about in the closed session. And at least in my view, that would be the proper way to approach the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Ms. Summerhill, go ahead and take us into closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor O'Neill. The council will adjourn into closed session to discuss four items. The first is the one mentioned by Mr. Mosher, conference with legal counsel related to anticipated litigation, and the facts associated with that are identified in 4A. The second is a conference with real property negotiators related to 17902 Burchard Street in Fountain Valley. The city negotiators and the negotiating parties are also identified under 4B. The third item is conference with labor negoti, I'm sorry, excuse me, real property negotiators for the properties located at 406, 408, and 410 South Bayfront. And again, the negotiators and negotiating parties are identified in 4C. And finally, there will be conference with labor negotiators with the employee organizations identified in 4D1 and 4D2, and that's all, again, listed in 4A through D.
All right. Before we go into closed session, do we have any conflicts to announce?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a closed session item C with a real property negotiator in the 406, 408, and 410 South Bayfront. I've received a campaign contribution from Mr. Beek within the past 12 months. Learned of this campaign contribution on June 6th, and been advised by the Assistant Attorney that I may return this contribution, so that I may participate in this matter. With that in mind, I'll be returning the contribution on today, June 11th, and will be participating in this item tonight.
All right. We'll go into closed session. Thank you. All right. All right. Okay. Welcome to the June 11th, 2024 regular meeting of the City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect all council members are present.
All right. Ms. Summerhill, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. The council adjourned in the closed session to discuss items 4A through 4C. There is no reportable action on that. We will be returning to discuss 4D after the regular meeting.
Yep. Just a quick note, we ran out of time. So we hadn't started 4D. We will go ahead and do that after the regular portion of the meeting. All right. We will, sorry, just a moment. Okay. We're going to go into the invocation by Dave Mann, Pastor Emeritus, from Calvary Chapel of Costa Mesa, followed by Councilmember Grant leading the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Thank you. It's good to be here again and good to see all of you. Father, we come before you, and we thank you for this evening and being able to gather together and represent, Lord, all the people here of the city of Newport Beach and Cron del Mar. Lord, we ask your blessing upon our meeting this evening and the things that will be discussed and perhaps decisions that will be made. We do pray, Father, and lift up the entire police department that protects our city, Lord. Bless them, continue to guide them and direct them in all the matters, Lord, that prevail. And then also the fire department, Lord, we pray for them, and all the staff there, and all the men that work and help out there in the city with the protection of the fire department, and also the water department, too. We pray for them, Lord, and all the working staff, some present here this evening, Lord, but all the staff that facilitate the city of Newport Beach. We pray for the continued leadership and the wisdom in our city, Lord. We pray for the continued leadership and the wisdom in our city, Lord, over the matters, Lord, that are with us daily. Guide and direct us, Lord Jesus, we pray, and bless time this evening that we have now before us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's great flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a fire starting back here or something. Do we have the fire chief here? There's something small going back here. Yeah, well, it's got smoke coming out, too. Or there was. No fire chief? Fire chief?
Chief Boyles, can you report to the council desk?
Leilani, we're going to take a five-minute recess. All right. Well, if you're just joining us back on TV, fire extinguishers everywhere. I'm just kidding. It was, it seemed to have been a plug on a monitor. Anyway, all right, we'll go ahead and move forward now. City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council. I'm sorry, I skipped right over to notice the public. Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. Let's now go into City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council on committee activities will count. We'll start with Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended my monthly OCAG meeting and the OCTA Elected Officials Roundtable. I had a lot of fun watching the Newport Mesa Soccer Classic, formerly known as Pilot Cup, matches for as long as my son's team hung in there. The mayor, Mayor Protem, and I had the honor of awarding the Newport Beach Foundation's 10th Distinguished Citizen Program class their certificates. Among the session's graduates were two of our Police Department officers, Hamilton and Maslin. We also held our Community Leadership Fair at Sherman Library and Gardens, where many of our local nonprofits presented on how to get more involved throughout the city. My family and I enjoyed riding in the Balboa Island Parade on Sunday. Laura Kleiman was representing for District 6. And lastly, along with the mayor, Sean Levin, and Avery McGlinty, I got to participate in the Fire Department's Fire Ops 101 training. Not to feed the rivalry, but I have to say it definitely challenged my previously held position that the Citizens Police Academy is the most fun program offered in the city. It's a close call, but mission accomplished. Tremendous respect for the incredibly challenging work our firefighters and paramedics do, although Councilmember Wigan just put out a fire up here, so maybe it's not that difficult after all.
You're just offended, everyone?
But no one knew I was here, so it was fine. It never happened.
Yeah, blame it on Laura. All right. Councilmember Blom?
Nothing, Dad.
Councilmember Avery?
Yeah, the Balboa Island Parade was great. Julie and I rode in a 57 red Thunderbird. It was absolutely beautiful with Julie's 10-year-old grandson, who went through his 10-pound bag of candy about halfway through the parade. He was empty. So despite our trying to get him to moderate his delivery, he really wanted to make sure all the kids got some candy. So that's it. And I'm looking forward to the Junior Lifeguard opening on the Balboa Pier tomorrow. I've got an administration meeting with the Sand District at 5:00, and I'm going to leave early to make sure I get there in time because that's something really to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wagon?
Yeah, I say "are" because Councilmember Grant and I are going to share our report this evening because we both participated in the 40th anniversary of our sister-city relationship with Okazaki, Japan. Both of us headed there a week and a half ago, maybe almost two weeks ago. This was expensed by our own personal bank accounts, not by the city or any taxpayer dollars. We did have the city fund a little bit of some gifts and some little souvenirs for those that were our hosts, but for the most part, we covered those expenses ourselves. But it was a great trip. Councilmember Grant had a nice article in the Stu News Today, and she has a lot of prepared remarks about it, so I'm going to hand it over to her. But I will say that there's some photos that she has taken of me on this trip that I'm surprised she didn't put out, but I did participate in some karaoke. And I was asleep on the bus like former Councilmember Rozansky was. They got some photos of me doing that. But it was really just a great trip. Japan is friendly. It's clean. It's super safe, and it's friendly. And it's just like Newport Beach. I would say all of those marks get hit on that country and especially our hosts in Okazaki. It was a tremendous learning experience. We have a great relationship with that city and with our city. So Councilmember Grant, if you could read what I think is more formal and more distinguished than what I've said, but thank you.
Sure, and you can put those pictures up. I have audio of Councilmember Wigan's karaoke, and I'm definitely not sharing that. I do want to just preface my remarks with it was a wonderful opportunity for the city to be represented by the Sister City Association delegation in our sister city of Okazaki, Japan. Many of us don't even know much about that program or the city, but I can tell you they know about us. The takeaway from the trip is that they love Newport Beach. Many of them have been here. They have hundreds of people that are in their Sister City Association. They run it through their Rotary, and they really highly regard our relationship. And they welcomed us in a very, as Councilmember Wigan said, in a very friendly and accepting manner, and were very curious about us. There will be a delegation coming here to Newport Beach in two weeks. They'll be at the first meeting in July and be presenting some gifts to our city. And that will be a wonderful opportunity for the general public to see exactly, you know, what the program's about. And I would highly, highly recommend that you get interested in the Sister City program. It's a wonderful way to understand our three sister cities, which are Okazaki, Japan, which was the 40th anniversary this year, Antilles, France, and Ensenada, which we participated in with a very, you know, an ongoing organized race every year. So those are our three sister cities. But just formally, I wanted to mention that, yes, we did travel last week to Okazaki to celebrate the 40th anniversary. There were 15-member delegation that went, mostly residents, that are members of the Sister City Association. We were able to visit with their mayor, Yakushiro Nakani, and his electeds. They have a 37-member city legislature, so it's a lot bigger. There's no picture of their chambers up there. The highlight was the presentation of the artwork that the Sister City Association purchased to donate to the city of Okazaki. You can see it pictured up there. A companion piece will be presented to us in July. It's a really formidable piece, and it's a wonderful representation of their city and our city, their country and our country. And I think it'll be something that we'll all enjoy when it's installed somewhere in our city after it's presented to us in July. This organization has a long history of excellent leadership by Connie Skiba, who was a president for many, many years, and now they have new leadership through Truly Gold Boring. She's the granddaughter of the original Rotarian, Wendell Fish, who was a Newport Beach resident, and along with another Rotarian, Mo Hamel, and an Okazaki Rotarian, Maseo Kato. They founded the Okazaki program. So this has a long, rich history in our city. And over the years, many staff and council members have attended Sister City trips to promote our city in other countries and around the world, including former city manager Homer Bloudow, councilmembers Keith Curry, Diane Dixon, Evelyn Hart, Mike Hen, Steve Rozansky, Don Webb, and many others. So this is a longstanding program that really has been deserving of this recognition by us. We also have a number of pieces of public art installed in our city from Okazaki itself. The Central Library has the children statue, and there's also one at Mariners. We also have some lanterns and other Japanese statues that are installed at Irvine Terrace Park. They're lovely additions to the public art in our city and were gifts. Many of you may not know that the bamboo in the bamboo courtyard at the library was also a Sister City gift, the two pieces representing one Newport Beach and the other Okazaki. So, you know, this is an important program that we have cherished through the years, and I hope to see it continue. In closing, I would just say that I hope that you all can attend in July and see the program in action when the Okazaki delegation attends here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, or I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness. Sorry. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I thought I was just going to do a storyboard here. Like Councilwoman Kleiman said, we graduate our 10th Distinguished Citizen Program, so this is our DCP class through the Newport Beach Foundation. That is number 10. That completes over 300 people that have gone through the program, so something that we're all very proud of. A lot of notable people in that class, so really great. The Officer Jared Osborne on your screen there, this is a unique story. Went to the badge-pinning ceremony. He was a transfer, a lateral from Costa Mesa after being there for four and a half years. He came up to me afterwards, and he said, "Do you remember me?" And I said, "No, unfortunately, I don't." Turns out, eight years ago, we were neighbors on 47th Street, and he was playing water polo for UCI, and he told me he had an interest in law enforcement. So I made an introduction to Chief Lewis at the time, and he got an internship with their Police Department. And unfortunately, the city of Newport Beach was not hiring, so he went and got a job with Costa Mesa. And here we are, four and a half years later, and he's now serving us as a community. So I'm very proud of him following his dreams. So it's great to have him on our team. And then I just, this is one of my favorite photos. This is from the Balboa Island Parade, and just kudos to everyone who put on that event. That was a world-class event, one of my favorite events of the year, and just a great event capturing the moment. That is right before we got bombarded by about 50 kids. And I think Councilman Avery, former mayor, I think the number is 20 pounds of candy. We ran out right at the very end. So it was a great day. So that's my report.
Yep. I'll also thank Balboa Island Improvement Association for putting on the parade. Really fantastic. Huge this year, so it was a lot of fun. We had a dignitary in the city this weekend that required a lot of public safety support. So my thanks to not just our first responders and staff for making sure that everything went well, but my appreciation to outside agencies as well that came into our city to help out. So I do, I say thank you. Tomorrow night, we have Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard building grand opening. We'll do the ribbon cutting, starting at 5:30. The ceremony tomorrow should be fantastic here in Newport Beach Civic Center, starting tomorrow morning. We're going to have 249 flags set up in the Civic Center because on Friday at 1:00 PM, we'll have a short ceremony here in the Civic Center. Will be really nice. We'll have color guard, and we'll have the, a whole ceremony devoted to Flag Day, which is on Friday, as well as celebrating the 249th, excuse me, 249th birthday of the United States Army. So you're all welcome to join. It'll, it's going to be really pretty with all of the flags there. And then the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard program starts on Tuesday next week, which will be the 18th. Please drive safely. You're going to have a lot of kids going directly over there, so I just ask that people be aware of that. And then, last but not least, on June 24th at 6:00 PM, in partnership with the Newport Beach Foundation, I'm going to be hosting a Q and A with Orange County Sheriff Don Barnes to talk about fentanyl education, something that matters quite a bit these days. All right. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 19. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. Do we have any items to pull or clarify? Councilmember Kleiman?
I have none.
Councilmember Blom?
Yes, I have a conflict on, I apologize.
16 due to real property interest.
Thank you. Yolanda, it's so wonderful to have you. 16 due to real property interest on 2 to 4 Marine.
Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
Councilmember Wagon?
Yes, 13 and 14, please.
Pull 13 and 14, okay. Councilmember Grant?
None.
Mayor Protem?
Just a comment on item number 14. I am a Leadership Circle member.
14 has been pulled.
Oh, so great. So that's my fault. Yep, nothing.
Okay. Since this is a receiving file, I'm not going to pull it. I'm just going to make a quick comment. And this is for Chair Gardner for item number 17. I read Jim's comments, and I think he's right about specific, I'm only going to talk specifically to the Arts Subcommittee. I think that Jim is right. I don't know that we've ever adopted the Arts Master Plan, so my only comment would simply be if you could please convey, it'd be fantastic if the Arts Subcommittee doesn't try to make new policy as part of the general plan update, instead goes through the Arts Commission and approval from the council. So that's, that's my only ask, but I'm not going to pull that because, again, it's just receiving file. So anyway, all right, so Mayor Protem, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the consent counter except for item 13 and 14, which were pulled by Councilman Wigan, and then a recusal on item 16 for real property by Councilman Blom, and then your comments on item number--
My comments don't need to be part of the motion.
Other than that, those are my, that's it.
All right, do I have a second?
Oh, and then amendments to item number one, which is the minutes.
All right. Seconded by Councilmember Kleiman. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar items that have not been pulled?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding item number four, which is the resolutions calling for the election of council members in November, since it's not mentioned in the staff report, you may have seen it in my written comment, I think it should be important for you to know that you do have a choice on that matter and that you, the legislative body of the city, are setting the requirement for how many words are allowed in the candidate's statements, and you have a choice of 200 or 400. That was not presented to you in the consent calendar. And I think there are arguments on both sides, so it's something you really should consider. And then also, it's a minor technicality, but I think it actually is your responsibility rather than the clerk's to decide whether the fee paid for the statements in the ballot are subject to a refund or a charge if the cost goes over her estimate. And the other item on the consent calendar that I wanted you to consider is item 18, which is your reconfirmation of the Finance Committee constituted exactly as it is currently. And the comment I want to make about that, I think it would be helpful for the council to consider actually a policy of rotating council members through the Finance Committee so that all of you, rather than just the same ones year after year, have exposure to the full budget process rather than just relying on some citizen intermediary to report to you. I think that would be useful practice to have in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on these items? All right, bring it back. We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
My computer does not allow me to ask to speak. Just for this question Mr. Mosher raised about the 200, 400 candidate statement fees, maybe our clerk could, is that something that we just kind of default due 200? Or I can't even remember what it was.
Yes. We've been utilizing the 200 words instead of the 400 words for as long as I can remember, if it's the desire of council. I suppose we should just pull it real quick and change it to 400 if that's the desire of council. of council.
And then as far as the, like, let's say there's two candidates running, there's no refund, obviously, but if, say, there's three candidates, does the price change? And then there should be a slight refund?
It will change a little bit, depending on how many registered voters we have, how many candidates there are. So that's why I have to give a, an amount and then refund it after.
I know. Maybe I should just pull it, then, just so we can continue discussion on it. But I just was curious, I can't even remember, you know, it seems like ages ago when there were, there were three candidates in my race. Did I, I got a refund, I guess, for, for that?
I'm pretty sure. I hope I could always look into it.
No, I'm just curious, not formally, but.
Do you, do you wanna pull, pull it to talk about increasing to 400 words?
Um, yeah, well, let's, might as well discuss it. I'd be happy to.
All right. So item number four has been polled, incorporated into your motion?
Yeah. Do you want me to start over?
Into your second? All right. Okay. So let's go ahead and vote with those, with items number four, 13 and 14 polled.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance 2024-14, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, terminating a non-exclusive franchise agreement for commercial solid waste. Show of hands. Unanimous, 7-0.
All right. At this time, we'll go into item number four for further discussion.
Yeah, and forgive me for doing that. I don't really have a say, or really an opinion, I guess, on 200 or 400 words, but, you know, maybe the council does if they, they don't. I'm happy just to continue on the item, but I just, you know, I'm, I'm kind of now perplexed that we, I guess, have the option here to set 200 or 400. You've all run campaigns yourself to be up here, so the 200, 400 matter to you, and especially, I guess, there's only one up here that's running for reelection, but.
Just, just to note also, 400 does cost more than 200.
Right. But could you, could we have an option of choosing 200 or 400? Or we have to lock in 200 or 400?
Correct. It's either 200 or 400.
So it's one or two, okay.
Of course, if they submit a candidate statement under 400, that's okay, but.
You pay the 400 price.
Correct.
Got it. Councilmember Grant.
I would just say that I'm seeing that it's been working well so far. I don't see a need for a change necessarily, or to incur additional costs, so unless someone has a better idea about that, that would be my indication.
I agree with that. Any, any more discussion up here?
Nope, I'm fine. I'll, I'll make a motion that we just.
Hang on one second, I'll come back to you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and council members. Nancy Scarborough, as a candidate in 2020, and again in 2024, I did the 200 words in 2020. I don't see any reason to pontificate beyond that, and I don't care to spend more money on it. So if that matters to you, that's my opinion. Thank you.
It does. Any other public comments? All right, we'll bring it back. Councilmember Wagon.
I'll just keep the motion, keep it the same, no change.
The staff recommendation. Do we have a second? Seconded by the Mayor Protam. Why don't we just vote by hand again? We might just do that the rest of the night, given the fire. All right, so.
Smoldering.
All in favor? Not of the fire, of the.
Yeah.
It's unanimous, 7-0.
All right. All right, let's move into item number 13. Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah, I don't need a snap report. I'm sorry to pontificate on this. I just think it's cool that a resident is interested in helping our police department. You don't see this in many cities, and it's a special thing for Newport Beach to receive a donation of a monetary value this high for our mounted police department team. So it, I just think it's cool, and it should be highlighted that somebody in the city has the interest in, in helping our department, to helping our city, to helping our law enforcement. So, sorry to pontificate on it, but I'll make a mo, or I guess you have to open a public comment.
Yeah. Any discussion first? Okay. Do we have any public comments on item 13? All right, bring it on back. Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to keep the staff report as is.
Okay. Seconded by the Mayor Protam.
All in favor.
All in favor, say, or raise your hand.
Thank you. That's 7-0.
Got it. All right. And then item number 14, Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah, probably a little bit more discussion onto this. I would like to see the, the historical, or at least from the previous year, had the Film Festival at 140,000. I'd like to see, it had been dropped to 120. I'd like to see it return to, at least to 140. In, in previous, previous years, it was at 150, and then it dropped down to 140, but now it's at 120. So I'd like to see it returned back up to, at least to 140, and happy to have that discussion to see if we can maybe even move it to 150, but that, that would be my, my initial part of the discussion on this.
Got it. Before we go further, I apologize, I should have, I knew that the Mayor Protam started mentioning a conflict when we were doing the.
It's not a conflict, it's just a.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'm just gonna mention that I'm a proud member of the Chamber of Commerce in Newport Beach.
You're not just a member, you're a proud member.
A proud Leadership Circle member.
Ms. Summerell, does that create a conflict, or?
It does.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All right.
And I believe, I'm sorry, Ms. Grant also is a member of Speak Up Newport.
I am a member of Speak Up Newport, and I am also a member of the Chamber.
Proud. I was gonna say, not proud, though. Did you notice that, Steve? Not proud. I'm kidding.
That's right. I did sell the interest in the company that was, is a member of the Chamber.
Ah, I see. All right, well, yeah, no problem. Okay, what's it going off around? All right, so, I apologize, coming back around, the, so just to, just wanted to make sure the, the only item you wanted to discuss on this, Mr. Wagon, was specific to increasing it back up from 120 to 140?
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? All right. Any public comments on this one? You can, you can do it. You might be, you might be snatching defeat from the jaws of victory here, Greg, but go ahead.
I want to come in and say, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protam, councilmembers, I'm Greg Schwenk. I'm the executive director and the co-founder of the Newport Beach Film Festival, and as always, I thank you and your predecessors for your steadfast support of the festival, not only as a cultural activity and a civic sense of pride, but also as an economic driver across different platforms that are very important to the city. This year marks our 25th anniversary, and we have withstood the battering of many things that have gone on throughout our community, throughout the world. And I'm very proud of the over 500 volunteers from our community that make the festival possible, and, and most of all, the, again, the steadfast support of you and your predecessors to make the festival happen. We've got some amazing things planned, and I think we shine a very wonderful spotlight on the different communities of Newport Beach, and will continue to do so far into the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, we'll bring it back. We got a few comments up here. Councilmember Blom, then Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. So I sat in the Subcommittee that helped kind of work through these numbers and utilize the budget that we have. So to help answer some of Councilmember Wagon's questions, the idea with any of our grants for any event is that we're here to support the continuation of events within the city, but as they grow and gain more notoriety and more success, therefore also gaining more sponsorship dollars, more attendance, and more revenue, we do try to wean those dollars back to continue more events throughout the city. And I think that this year is a good example of that, as we moved some dollars around to some of our other signature events. And so as we're trying to support all of them, we're, we're always trying to do that within our budget limitations, and I think hopefully that helps answer some of the questions about why it's going down. It's not that we're trying to penalize anybody. We really love the Film Festival. As Greg knows, I, I think I always make it to opening night. They do an amazing job there. It's a breadth of new people that make it into the city, that get to experience what we are, entirely different style than what we're traditionally running in the city, but I think the job is, is that eventually birdies are gonna fly on their own, and we've, we're still always here to help you, Greg, and help the Film Festival, but we are gonna try to constantly spread those dollars out.
All right. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. So I'm supportive of raising the grant for the Film Festival, and the number one reason would be that it is distinguished from other investments that we make in events in our city, in that it does, in my mind and my understanding, provide a significant economic return to the city and our visitor-serving community. I would say that I know that only anecdotally, and what I'd like to see from the Film Festival in years forward is a deeper dive into that. I think it's important for us to really understand that, because I don't think that this is merely a grant of funds that we make to an event for, to, you know, have spirit or camaraderie in our community, but this is actually an economic investment. But I'd like to know that for a fact. I know, like I said, I know it anecdotally. I've understood the festival for many, many years, 20-plus years that I've either attended or been involved or helped to assist with the festival. So I think it's important for us to distinguish certain of our events, whether they be small, medium, or large signature events, that provide some sort of return, and that those are important for us to look at in a different lens, and that's how I'm viewing the Film Festival. So I am supportive of at least going to the 140, and if there was support at the council level, I would consider something higher, closer to their actual ask, if that's possible.
Mayor Protam.
So if we went to 140, went 20,000 above, that's not gonna pull funds from anyone else, that's just gonna come from the general fund?
Yes, if council didn't reallocate from somewhere else, we would find from the general fund.
Okay. I'd be supportive at 140.
Cool. I'm not gonna ask for a change on this particular one, but I will note, just for next year, one of the discussions we had had a couple years ago, a few years ago, Councilmember Blom and Avery, you'll have to correct me on this, one of the ones was a discussion on the Newport Mesa Spirit Run, making sure that we were seeing a lot more council, uh, community support, 'cause $30,000 is pretty substantial, and so when we had been talking to the organizers over there, one of the things we wanted to see was additional community support, as opposed to having the city fund a substantial amount of it. So I would just ask that next year, when this comes up, 'cause we're, we're at, I think we're at about that two- or three-year mark where we were kind of hoping to see more of it, if they, you know, take a hard look at that one and see if, see if the money should continue on after that. So, let's see, Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, we've already done public comment. Okay. Let's, Councilmember Wagon, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'd like to move the staff report, but an increase of, to 140 for the Film Festival.
All right. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grant. All in favor, raise your hand.
With Councilmember Blom voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go ahead, give me just a moment, let me pull my screen back up. Let's go ahead and, all right, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Adam Leverens. At the last regular council meeting, I indicated that I would email each of you individually, seeking to obtain an answer to the oft-asked question if yacht clubs and Lido Island Community Association will be exempted from the 3% to 500% increase that the Harbor Commission has posed for mooring rents. As of 5:15 this evening, I have not received a response from mayor or council on that request. Others have made the same inquiry, and it remains unclear. For tonight's meeting, I submitted, for the record, 14 pages of materials related to my seeking that answer. There's a number of emails, some remarks I've made here, pages of the minutes, and a written letter I'd submitted. The one time I did think I obtained an answer was from Harbor Commission Chair Steve Scully, and he had said that the rate structure that has been recommended by the Harbor Commission is for mooring permittees as they are defined in Title 17 of the municipal code. However, reading through the near 70 pages of code again, the term "mooring permittee" is not defined. If you search the document, "mooring permittee" appears 48 times, but none of those seems to define what it is. "Mooring and permittee" are defined separately, so I still don't have an answer whether or not this exemption is going to exist. I'd also note that my public records requests for the actual Harbor Commission recommendation that is said to have been forwarded to council have likewise produced nothing as of yet. I've got a, hopefully, a standing records request with the clerk's office for that when it's available. I can suppose that the text of that will come out of the city's attorney's office, city attorney's office, when the time comes, and in the interests of openness and transparency, of saving time of yourselves, myself, staff, reduction of copy expenses for all the written comments that get printed out for these meetings, and most basically, in the interests of good governance and ethics, I'd ask Mayor O'Neill that you request the city attorney's office simply answer the question. Thank you. Oh, one more off-topic thing. If you're applying for the Carnegie Medal for Putting Out Fires, based on the previous presentation this evening, you've got more work to do. Thank you.
Smoldering. Good start.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm really short. Good evening, council members. My name is April Strong, and I'm a 30-plus-year resident of the Balboa Peninsula. I attended the meeting last month regarding the landmark tree at the library and spoke that evening as well. I am speaking here now with great concern over the safety of the pedestrians in my community. I have been concerned for years, as have many friends and neighbors, in that our area does not have near enough safety measures implemented. It has come to my attention that I have been speaking often with other residents, rather than speaking to all of you who have the power to make real positive changes. Here are my proposed ideas, as I wrote you at the beginning of this month. Lights in the crosswalk. Laguna Beach is so responsible about this. To the best of my knowledge, every single crosswalk on PCH has its own signal, as well as flashing lights on the actual road and the crosswalk lines. At the very least, we need flashing signage, as was finally installed in front of Newport Elementary, as well as flashing lights on the street below and every crosswalk down the peninsula. Signage. Drivers must be alerted that they are driving through a neighborhood. Periodic signs should be installed that state to drivers that they are indeed in a neighborhood and need to proceed slowly with much caution and abide by the speed limit of 30 miles per hour and 25 miles per hour near Balboa Village. Speed bumps. Just making sure everybody's paying attention, but they're not. Mr. Blom. I just, I'm noticing that, yeah. Speed bumps. Installing well-placed speed bumps at least approaching and leaving the pier areas, both at Newport Pier and Balboa Village, would slow traffic and prohibit speeding. Stronger police presence. Drivers slow tremendously just seeing an officer. Simply with even one or two motorcycle officers strategically placed and/or circling the area would create awareness, especially during busy weekends, holidays, and summer. This is absolutely imperative. The recent death of young Rosenda Smiley, coupled with another recent killing at 20th Street in the crosswalk, make two deaths within the timeframe of just a few months. We are obviously not doing near enough to keep people safe here. I speak for myself and other members of our community in demanding that the city council address these issues and make some positive changes to ensure the safest possible environment for our residents and guests, especially considering that you have already voted to spend $16 million on destroying a landmark tree and rebuilding most of an entire block in the near future. I think spending a tiny fraction of that to save lives is obvious priority. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm here on, as a mooring permitty. I've attended several Harbor Commission meetings, and the commissioners will not answer questions, nor will they agree to meet in any situation other than a Harbor Commission meeting where they're allowed, where we are allowed only to address the commission but not receive answers. Per the California Coast Commission, they are responsible to communicate with all California residents, not just Newport Beach residents, and we are allowed to ask questions and get answers. I don't expect an answer to this question, but why have the Harbor Commissioners, who have waterfront homes with docks, not recuse themselves from the discussion about raising rates for moorings? I'm also very concerned that should the bias discriminatory and poorly defined mooring rate increase be approved, the Harbor Commission will feel emboldened to continue to pursue the dangerous and ill-conceived mooring reconfiguration plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dr. Philmore Lewis Smiley IV, and I'm the father of Rosenda Smiley, the little girl that was tragically killed on Balboa Peninsula on May 25. Normally, when I'm going to speak publicly, I sort of write something up or have some notes, but I decided tonight to go off the cuff. I would appreciate it if you would get off your phone and pay attention. Thank you. I don't think there's anything more important on your phone than what I'm saying right now, sir, and I would appreciate your full attention. My name's Dr. Philmore Smiley. My little girl was killed in your neighborhood. There are multiple layers of distress that have gone with this killing. Many multiple layers of distress. One in particular, that in talking to every resident down there that I've come down to mourn my daughter's death, and every businessperson down there, every single person reported to me that they seen with their own eyes someone getting hit as a pedestrian by a vehicle on Balboa Peninsula. This is a common occurrence. I read through briefly the report back there with your flawed design, with outdated data justifying why you don't want to spend the money to make that neighborhood safer. I find that very frustrating and very disappointing, and feel as though, had this council taken these types of things seriously in the past, perhaps my daughter would be alive today had these simple precautions been taken into action. Like are happening in many beach cities, in Santa Monica, they stopped the traffic in every direction to let the people walk by. Yet on this busy Balboa Peninsula, there's no modern safety measures at all. So I would implore you, as you're considering spending all this other money that I've heard you talk about tonight, that you put children's lives in front of all of that and improve the safety standards in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Bring it back. We're going to move into, obviously, our hearts go out, and can't even imagine what you're going through. We're going to go into public hearings now on the budget, so we'll go into item number
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Presented for your consideration tonight is adoption of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2425, which is the culmination of a coordinated effort across all departments over the past several months. We have a very robust budget process that provides various opportunities for public engagement. On May 28, the operating budget and capital improvement program were reviewed with the City Council. The numbers that were reflected in the presentation to the council on May 28 reflected all proposed budget revisions. Therefore, no changes have been made to the numbers since the council study session on May 28. We also met with the Finance Committee on May 30 to finalize the committee's recommendations to the council, considering the proposed budget for next year. To recap the presentation to, that was presented to the council two weeks ago, the budget is balanced with revenues exceeding expenditures. We are projecting a budget surplus of $5.3 million with continued growth in general fund revenues. The budget also reflects an updated savings program for long-term capital needs, with $3.8 million in additional funding for future capital needs. And then lastly, on May 30, the Finance Committee voted to recommend the city manager's proposed budget for City Council consideration, which includes the budget revisions that are reflected in the staff report. The baseline budget includes $40 million that's allocated towards paying down the city's pension liability. It's recommended that an additional $5 million appropriation be made at the time of budget adoption to bring the total paid towards the city's pension liability to $45 million. This is approximately $14 million more than what is required to be paid and is anticipated to result in eliminating the city's pension liability in fiscal year '32, '33. After allocating the additional $5 million to pay down the pension liability, a structural surplus of $290,000 remains for next fiscal year. Calpers and the city's municipal code requires annual approval of certain documents related to position classifications and salary ranges. Certain changes are also proposed to Council Policy F2, the reserve policy, to align the policy with reserve targets reflected in the water and wastewater rate studies that the council approved last September. Lastly, performance metrics are reflected in the agenda packet for all departments, which will be incorporated into the final budget document after adoption. These performance metrics were identified as part of an ongoing commitment to ensure high quality and efficient delivery of city programs, and to fulfill one of the elements set forth in the fiscal sustainability plan. Before I conclude, I wanted to point out that last month, Fitch Ratings reaffirmed the city's AAA credit rating. This is actually the first time that the city has undergone a ratings review since Fitch recently revised the rating model. The ratings report cited the city's practice of making annual pension contributions well above the minimum required amount, along with a very strong and stable tax base. The AAA rating underscores the city's solid financial standing, which is credited to the council for your exceptional leadership and support. This concludes my presentation. We're available if you have any questions.
All right. Do we have any discussion or questions before we go out to public comment on this? All right. Let's go to public comment on this item.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. Again, I think it would be a good practice for council members to circulate through the Finance Committee so they see the whole process and financial policy setting. I can't actually recall, since my memory is not that great, whether the council as a whole has paid attention to the budget revisions, which are being considered tonight. I know they were discussed by the Finance Committee at last month, and one of the items that didn't get exactly a warm reception there and that I'm kind of questioning on, that the budget revisions are not really called much attention to in the staff report. They're on page 20-18, and they're Exhibit A to one of the resolutions you would be adopting. And one of the items is going from every two months, bimonthly billing of utility bills to monthly billing, which will cost the city more than it currently does and will cause residents to have to pay more bills than they currently do. It seems like a lot of work for not a great effect. I don't think a whole lot of people like paying more bills than they currently do, especially if, if it's a higher cost and the cost of doing that is going to be passed on to them. That there is a reason, which the Finance Committee heard, that the utility department may want to do this. I personally don't think it's a particularly great idea. I wanted to call that your attention. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars that seems to make life more difficult for everybody. At your joint meeting, I mentioned that I personally have tried to understand the budget for a number of years, and I always find it difficult. And I provide one more example. The, the mayor's coffee with the mayor was very well-attended, so I was not able to learn all about internal service funds there. So continuing my education on that, I looked at the first page of that, which is in a tab in your budget called Other Activities, and I noticed it calls something called the Community Development Block Grants as one of the internal service funds we have. Yet if you look earlier at the fund balances, it's not called an internal service fund, it's called a special revenue fund. So I think possibly it's mischaracterized here. And then I would point, when I turn the page over to learn the details of the Community Development Block Grant, I see a number here which does not match the number in the fund balance. It says CDBG total, but it turns out in line under that, if you look very carefully at the account number called Financial Activities, is a continuation of that item, and the two things have to be added together. There's innumerable things like this that make it very hard to follow. So, but those are my comments in addition to, I think the performance measurements are a good thing, but if you want to go full coast mesa, the next step would be to adopt a strategic plan that goes with those goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we haven't closed it yet. This guy.
I have the gun.
All right. We're bringing it back. Councilmember Grant.
Hello. I just wanted to briefly comment that I actually wanted to thank the city manager and Jason's Department for, and all the department heads for the performance metrics. I think that that's a very large step towards additional sort of transparency, and also just assisting the council members and any of the members of the public and others that look at the budget and understanding exactly, you know, where the dollars are going and what the departments are doing. And so I felt that that was a really improved way of presenting the budget, so I appreciate that effort.
Great. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to make a couple. First, I am not going to spend the next half hour talking about internal service funds. And he's right, the coffee with the mayor was too well-attended to talk about them, although if we had, people would have needed coffee. So this is going to be my 10th and final year on the Finance Committee. This will be my sixth and final year as chairman of the city's Finance Committee. And we've had a lot of folks coming through and serving as citizen members, so I want to say thank you to each person who has been serving as a citizen member over the last 10 years. Giving up your time to give back to the community is meaningful, particularly when it comes to working through a budget of this size and this amount of complexity. The budget is quite literally probably the primary reason I ended up running in the first place back in 2016, because I'd been added on to the city's Finance Committee back in 2015. Saw a need for, fortunately, it was a need for improvement and not revision or restructuring or anything like that, but simply the ability to make sure that we're budgeting for the current needs as well as the future needs. And this is a well-balanced budget, not just on revenue and expenditure, but on present and future needs. One of the things that we were really facing was some dire straits when it came to unfunded pension liabilities. I believe our funded status when I first got on was somewhere in the 60% range, somewhere little, maybe a little bit more than that. We've increased it by, I believe, up to about 72%, and fingers crossed that it's higher when, when I roll off in December. But, you know, a lot of work goes into this every year. To Councilmember Grant's point, not just thank you to the Finance Committee members, but thank you very much to our Finance Director and our past Finance Directors. Thank you to our city manager for all the work that goes into this. It's nice when we have an uncontroversial budget like we have now. That was another thing, when I first came on, we'd actually just come off, the first time, we'd seen a dissent, a series of dissenting votes, there'd actually been a 4-3 budget vote, which we hadn't seen in a while. So coming in and making sure that we're taking care of our long-term debt, taking care of the unfunded pension liability, so that future councils aren't being forced into bad decisions because of decisions we're making today matters. And then saving money for future projects we know are coming really matters. But ultimately, I think where I'm really most proud of a budget like this is we maintain the priorities that we've always set for ourselves, which is, you know, a well-funded, taking care of the core functions. So, you know, we're looking at a $78 million budget right now for our police department. I've pointed out to a few people, that is larger than the entire budgets of, I believe, San Juan, Capistrano, and Dana Point combined. When I ran the per capita numbers, and it's not a fair comparison because we have so many tourists, but when I ran the numbers, we're, I believe we're spending on per capita double what most cities in the county spend. And not far behind is our fire department, which is, there's a good reason for that because both of these departments have earned it. They've earned the public trust, they continue to earn the public trust every day. And in the case of the fire department, being able to have us go out and tell the members of the public that you are quite literally in the top 1% in the entire country by being a Class 1 facility is spectacular. And so, you know, a budget every year is a city's priority set over time. And so it's been a lot of fun being a part of this process. And so I, again, just wanted to say thank you. And thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to stay on as chair for as long as I have. I look forward to, in a few weeks, having Mayor Protam Stapleton take over as chair. And I look forward, frankly, to rolling off and having someone else take my spot. And so with that, I'm going to take the chairman's privilege and go ahead and make the staff, make the motion to approve staff recommendation for our budget, seconded by the Mayor Protam. All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, 7-0.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, let's move ahead into item number 21. I don't believe we need a staff report on this, but you, come on forward anyway, just in case we have any questions. Do we have any need for a staff report? Do we have any questions or discussion on this item? It's okay, just take a seat, just in case we have something. Let's go out to public comment on this item. Do we have public comment on this item? No. All right, let's bring it back up here. Do we have a motion? Moved by, staff recommendation moved by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Wagon. All in favor, raise your hand.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do we have any such motions? See, none. All right, we do need to finish our closed session, so, oh, I apologize. No, 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 we're going to do, we, we're not adjourning yet. We need, yeah, we need, we will be coming back and doing the adjournment. So, Summerhill, why don't you take us back into closed session?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. The council will be adjourning into closed session to discuss conference with labor negotiators. The employee organizations are identified in D1, and the unrepresented employees are identified in D2 of the closed session agenda.
And for anyone who would want to stick around, I'll just note real quickly, we do not anticipate reportable action coming out of this, but we will need to come back out and adjourn, which we will be adjourning tonight in the memory of Ski Harrison, which will be read by Councilmember Grant when we come back out. So we're going to take a, do I need to, Ms. Summerhill, do I need to specify a time, or can we just go into closed session and come back out?
We, we can just come back out.
All right. We'll go into closed session. Thank you. Summerhill, do we have any reportable action?
There is no reportable action.
All right. Tonight, we're going to be adjourning in the memory of Ski Harrison. Do we have the slide up? Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. Ski Harrison lived in Newport Beach for 55 years. He and his wife Kathy raised two daughters, Jenny and Lindsay, who attended Mariners Elementary, Ensign Middle School, and Newport Harbor High School. Kathy served two terms on the Newport Beach Arts Commission and was chair of that commission several times. Ski was often seen at many community events, especially after he retired from his partnership at Rutan and Tucker, where he served our community as a leading lawyer. He attended many Mariners bike parades on the Fourth of July, participated in Newport's Leadership Tomorrow many years ago, and he was always at the mayor's dinner and often escorted former mayors to the stage. Ski was a man of great integrity, kindness, intelligence, and wit. He is deeply missed by his wife Kathy and family Jenny, Lindsay, Chris, Grant, Ryan, Jackson, Charlie, and Harrison. There will be a memorial service for Ski on July 30. If anyone needs more information about that, they can reach out to me. I just want to say personally, Ski was a dear friend. I knew him for many, many, many years. He was a great man, and he'll be greatly missed.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.